Evening, everyone. We are waiting for our planner. She's stuck in traffic. I think she didn't leave early enough. But, um, so hang out for a few more minutes and then we'll get started.
Oh, nice. They got help.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. We'll get started on some of this other stuff while we wait for our planner to show up. Uh, the Red Bank planning board will come to order. This 11th day of June, which blows my mind. The time is 7:10 PM. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by notice sent to the Asbury Park Press and Two River Times, posted in the main lobby of this building, as well as on the municipal website. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Portman.
Here.
Director Sherrill. Christina Bonatzakis. Diamakuso.
Here.
Ludimento.
Here.
Barbara Bullis.
Here.
Megan Massey Anderson. Wilson Beebe.
Here.
Itzel Hernandez.
Here.
Fred Stone.
Here.
And Brian Parnigan.
Here.
We have one administrative matter, the meeting, regular meeting minutes from April 23rd. Does anyone have any additions or changes? That being said, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Any opposed or abstained?
I'm here. Oh, no, you are. You are here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That is all right.
Everyone knows how much I love it when the public comes, although there are quite a few of you tonight. So, a couple of ground rules before we get started. Um, I really don't want to do any comments or questions about what we've seen up until this point. Susan, when she gets here, is going to go over the changes that the committee, um, has suggested for the development. Um, I'd really like to limit questions and comments to what's being presented tonight, the changes that, that the committee has come, come up with, which the builder has agreed to. Um, I like to limit comments to that unless you have an overall comment about the project. But we're going to keep those short, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so I had really hoped that our planner would be here by now. But every road here is closed or being paved, so I understand. Um, so we'll, we'll do the public hearing here as Red Bank Train Station Development Plan. Um, and I'll remind everyone, as I, I have every meeting, this is not a site plan. This is not a plan from the developer about what they're absolutely going to build. This is our recommendation to the mayor and council to, with zoning instructions for these properties. And then what I think will be later in the year, the developer will actually design plans and come back with a full site plan. Again, you are all welcome to come back to and we can nitpick and talk about the plan in detail. Um, hi, Susan. Um, so that's kind of the, the, the situation. I, I, several people have mentioned that, you know, we're approving this development. What we're doing is sending to the mayor and council our approval or not of the zoning for this zone. It's like we were rezoning Broad Street. And you're commenting on what you, if you don't want any buildings taller than this, or set further back from that, that's what we're doing for this site. So, keep in mind, this isn't incredibly specific about the building, but we did meet with the developer and the committee so that we under, so they understand the direction we're going in. Because we wanted some changes after the last meeting, if you recall. Um, and they have agreed to those. So that's what we're going to talk about. So Susan, if you want to come up and, uh, go over those changes and then we'll do comments and questions from the board and then the public. And then I can go home and feed my cat. You like that we closed essentially every road you needed to get here tonight?
No.
Let's pull it up a little bit closer.
Um, so thank you, Chair. And, um, since the last meeting, yes, we did be, been met with the developer and talked about the proposed changes. Really, since the last meeting, you know, there were some changes that we talked about from the original March draft that I can cover. But those were also discussed at the last meeting. So the only changes since the last time that you met, back in April, is the reduction on the north parcel. This is the parcel that's closer to Monmouth Street. Across the entire parcel of height, uh, to limit the building at five stories or 60 feet. If you recall, we were originally at six stories when there was a discussion about going down to five stories along just the Monmouth frontage. But this latest change would reduce the entire building to a maximum height of five stories. So it would be five stories, 60 feet across the entire redevelopment area of both the north and the south parcels. So with that change, we also did swap out some of the renderings that were in the appendix to the redevelopment plan. The developer provided new renderings that showed, um, the five stories of that north building. And that's accomplished through, you know, some potential changes to the building, uh, unit mix. Um, the, the part that goes over the Oakland Street portion of the area, they add some units in there. Um, and they increased the residential on the ground floor along West Street in particular, which I think is actually better from standpoint of providing a more residential frontage along West Street, a little bit more lower density. So then they could correspondingly reduce, and this is all in their concept, by the way, they did reduce um, the retail or commercial square footage on the ground floor to, you know, kind of shift some of that space around. So that's really the only changes on the maximum height. Everything else in terms of density setbacks, design, that all remains as we discussed back in April. Would you like a reminder of some of the changes that happened since March plan or is that more confusing?
I have a particular question in regards to this plan, just for clarification. Could you share with us if we lost any affordable housing as a result of the reconfiguring of the, the building? And so how much affordable housing will we lose?
Well, if you remember the affordable housing, you know, 80 units is talked about, but that was really 20% of 400. 400 units was always the maximum and still is the maximum residential density. Now, what they actually come up with in terms of the number of units is going to be less than that. I think it would have been less than that even without the height reduction, but, um, and I'm not sure exactly where we're going to fall in terms of net loss of residential units. Um, but it's going to be less than 400, which means that the 20% is off of a lower number. I don't have an exact number for you. Um, it's not, I think, a dramatic decrease in affordable units because it's corresponding to the reduction in the overall, but it's still based, that 20% based on the top.
And I just want for the sake of clarification as well. Um, you've mentioned that they were reductions to the size of, um, commercial space, right, to...
That's the developer's concept. It's in the actual redevelopment plan, has not changed in terms of the minimum, maximum residential versus retail square footage. So that all still remains. It's just that, you know, in looking at how their units are going to stack up, and again, it may change when they come to the planning board for site plan review, what they actually come up with, but they were just looking at what they could accomplish, uh, you know, based on their prior plan with that reduction height. It requires kind of change in the mix of the square footages in their building, but wasn't the plan, hasn't changed in terms of that.
Yeah, I think my concern lies in the, the feeling that I got was that we were willing to compromise. And I say we, because then we'll see, I'm interested in the discussion overall, but, um, the potential loss, even though we're not quite sure how much, it seems like there will be some inevitable uh, loss of affordable housing. And I feel like that's the only actual conversation and concern that I've heard for most residents. Right? So, um, if there's any suggestions that you may have, um, for us to include to ensure that we get the maximum amount of affordable housing, then I would like to, uh, to, to hear that.
Mr. Chair, may I inform that discussion a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, based on the site plans and their conceptual, right, they're taking about 40 units off. Uh, maybe fewer because they're relocating some of those units, right, in what previously were the bridges. So there's probably a loss of somewhere between maybe four and eight units. They're projecting 351 units, 176 in the north building, 175 in the south. So that, that's 70 affordable units. Plus, we don't know that we lost all the 40 on the top because they were, some of those units were relocated. And then when they actually submit their plans, their units may be smaller than what they have, and so the number would go up.
It's a little bit of luck, but with some capture, thanks for having numbers.
Of course. You, Jeff?
Are we increasing setbacks today, Susan?
That had previously been discussed already, um, back in April. So yes, from the original March version of the setbacks on both Monmouth and West Street would be increased from five to 10 feet. So that, um, change was already made and stays, remains in the plan.
And almost from the board have any questions about where we are? Well, let's find it out.
Right.
Uh, I was just refreshing myself on the, the master plan, kind of our community document, and it's most recently the guidance for this board. Um, so whether this is for Susan or the, the committee itself. Um, in the recommendations there around, uh, pursuing transit village and also recommendations for this area. Uh, at that point, the recommendation was developers would have the ability to achieve a height of six stories and a density of up to 50 units per acre. Just wanted to understand, um, you know, why we felt we might want to deviate with this particular plan. Was it the arrangements or anything else that, um, made us feel like that was fact too large?
And I'll start with just the master plan. It was, it was a maximum of six stories. That was really disputed at the time as upper limit, what you might have, and likewise with the residential density. The main recommendation of the master plan was to undertake a process like this, redevelopment process, as part of any redevelopment plan. There's give and take and starts actually looking plans and work.
The, the height change for me was really the public outcry over it. Um, you know, these are generational buildings that are going to be there long after we're all gone. Um, and I feel like our impact on that can be what they look like. Height, design, setbacks, everything, and those are important. And I hate tall buildings. So, the, the public really turned me around, as I said last time, that I, I felt like six stories in the north building was too tall.
And I'll just say that what I heard was that we have a real shortage of affordable housing.
Agreed.
That's, you know, I think, I'll just say that affordable housing is the first thing to get negotiated away in any project because it's oftentimes talking about people that are not, right, the people making decisions are oftentimes people that are not going to be living in those spaces. And we have to be accountable to that. I am an unapologetic supporter of affordable housing and I see people make choices, hard choices every day, and unfortunately, they always choose to give up something and it's never really the commercial space. It's never anything else, right? It's always this person that we don't know, but we know one thing about them. And that's that they are in need of affordable housing. And somehow that need oversees or supersedes the need for an extra wall. I don't disagree at all. And I want to make that abundantly clear with anyone's concern about the height or the look of the building. I agree with a lot of the setbacks and I'm grateful that folks are really having a say in it. And I mentioned this last time and I gave a lot of credit to, to the chair for, and the public for coming out and doing that, but I just, I disagree fundamentally that affordable housing is like the easiest thing to consider giving up here. I'd, I'd give up not liking the look of a building to provide housing for more people if I could. If more people did that, there wouldn't be a housing shortage.
I understand the frustration, the way I'm looking at it is it's about 70 affordable units if it's 350 units.
Absolutely.
70 units of affordable housing doesn't exist now, so.
No, I get that, again.
It's funny or not, but it's going to be, it's going to be a big.
Yeah, and it's not so much towards, towards, yeah, I deeply appreciate the fact that you're updating it with everything. I just think us as people that have to make the choice, right, of what we consider acceptable or unacceptable, I just don't consider affordable housing shortage acceptable.
Does anyone from the public have a question or comment that they would like to make?
Bring them.
Bill, come on up.
Then I have to follow up.
Sure.
Uh, Susan, in the last, uh, discussion on the, uh, West Street side, we were talking about, um, individual apartment entrances with two steps, porticoes, and similar features aren't to take it a more residential.
That might.
As Amos said.
Yeah.
Are encouraged. Did we change that language to make it more, uh,
Firm?
More firm, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it still says encouraged, but I'm checking now, so.
It was the discussion that if we don't like it, we can reject it anyways when the site plan comes through. I don't remember exactly.
Um, Bill, I think the, uh, Mike? The, 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 the only mic working, I think, is the one Susan has. You might have to, you can grab it and kind of move it over.
Hey, please.
And I'd like to remind everyone again, let's try and focus comments and questions on the changes that Susan just went over. If you love or hate the whole thing, you're welcome to say that. Just don't say it for five minutes. Go ahead, Bill.
Good evening, uh, planning board, mayor, and everybody else that's shown up to, uh,
Give me your hand.
Uh, help, uh, steer Red Bank in the.
Going to have to bring them closer. The mic, the mic. The mic, so like the people in the back in here.
Yeah, yeah.
You have it now?
Yes.
Yeah, right. So, uh, basically I want to set the foundation for the rest of the evening. Uh, what we're trying to focus on, and my understanding from what Susan just said is that there are practically no changes at all for density. And, uh, it's still a fixed 20% affordable. Uh, there's, uh, no change in, uh, the issue of affordability as far as, uh, current, uh, residents and, um, the gentrification issues that were brought forth. And I also understand the generous and is not, uh, fond of tall buildings, which, uh, makes other, uh, a bunch of us very happy about that we don't like tall buildings. But after what I heard, then the first question that I would like to post to Susan is whether she's ever seen this document, Gentle Density and Missing Middle Housing in New Jersey. A Guide for New Jersey Communities, September 25th, 2024.
Yes.
Alright. So basically, uh, and the foundation that you set that nothing has changed, and these basically are some of the issues that were important to the NAACP. Um, I'm speaking basically as the president of the NAACP and, uh, basically emphasizing, uh, the issue of, uh, the plan as it is does not basically address, uh, the issues. And I'm going to leave it at that, not reiterate all those statements that I've made in the past. Uh, back in the room, I have a sign, uh, that is seen all floating around in Red Bank. It says basically, uh, Don Railroad Red Bank. And if someone could help me out, uh, someone in the back will probably take that sign and, uh, show it, uh, any volunteer. Yes, yes, could you kindly bring that forth? These are signs that are growing up in Red Bank like mushrooms. And the reason that I'm bringing this up, to your notice, and you could take it back. Right? The reason that I'm bringing this up is that, uh, the public doesn't have a means of, uh, kind of affecting the direction of, uh, where we're going. Uh, Dan and I are pretty much soon going to be handing over the baton to, uh, somebody younger to, uh, address what's going to happen in the next 100 years. Now, what the NAACP has been doing under my direction is being, uh, trying to engage, uh, Red Bank in the courts. And, uh, eventually if the planning board goes ahead with something that we basically see as not uh, consistent to what it is that we think will be in the best interest of our constituents, then we're going to have to litigate this matter in court. And so to kind of finish up, my question would be to the attorney that considering that Red Bank is afraid to meet me up in court. And I have a document here where Red Bank was sued in court with respect to gentrification and, uh, matters of, uh, how the black population is being diminished and all that stuff. And they are afraid to come to Chazrec Court to answer to, uh, uh, the complaints. Uh, Mayor Portland, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The attorney for the town says that none of the council people should talk to me or accept service of process. Fortunately, the Chazrec Court does not believe in just dismissing this stuff and letting me go. They dismiss it without prejudice and they're saying that we're going to have to figure out a way to serve these people.
Bill, as you know, I'm always happy to speak with you.
Yes.
Let's try and drive this back quickly to the development at hand.
Right, so the development at hand is that since it's always a lecture to us about your changes, rather than listening to us as to, we want gentle density and dealing with a missing middle housing in New Jersey, which the New Jersey Transit accepts as something that they want. Let's move this towards that, where we can see single housing condos and all that, and that space that we have, rather than these tall buildings that look like bog ships. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else have any comments? Hang on, sir, with the glasses, the guy in the taupe shirt raised his hand first. Come on up. That is Turkish one.
I'm sure.
Uh, name and address, please.
Jonathan Gilby and 85 Pinky Road.
Your last name, please.
Yes, it's G.I.L.D.A.Y. And, um, I came here today because, uh, while I have not been able to attend the other meetings, I did watch them. And I have a, uh, opinion that I know has not been shared in favor of, um, what I see in the redevelopment plan and in favor of adding density. And so I have two points I'd like to make quickly. I know you said under five minutes, so I'm noting the time. And, uh, the first is about affordability. There's been a lot of talk about affordability. Affordability is also important to me. Um, and among my peers, family with children in the Red Bank school system, uh, affordability is top of mind. It is a frequent conversation, uh, specifically housing affordability. The same when I talk to young professionals that are recently entered the workforce is also top of mind for them. Um, we are, I think I am more concerned about affordability if we squander the opportunity to increase the supply of housing by not allowing any redevelopment to go forward. That is my concern with, uh, the comments I've been hearing. Uh, we know that housing affordability follows the market laws of supply and demand. We know that research papers, uh, such as Do Housing Units in Your Backyard Raise Your Rents by Xiao Di Li in 2019 tell us that increases the availability of dense market rate housing alleviates demand pressure to help keep rents in control. So, again, I fear that without increasing supply, we have an even worse affordability problem because the demand's not going to wa, go away. People want to live in Red Bank. And so if there's not more places for them to live, the prices will go up. Increasing, uh, density and market rate housing is a way to, uh, alleviate displacement of current residents. Making sure that we include affordable housing in those new developments is a way to, um, alleviate the gentrification that comes with density. And the second point I want to make, by five minutes here, is that I'm excited about the improvements to pedestrian infrastructure that are in the redevelopment plan, and I have not, um, heard a comment on those yet, so I wanted to voice that opinion today. Uh, there's a number of things I'm excited about, such as the bump outs, the crosswalk improvements, the reduced cartway widths, to hopefully not have so many people speeding down Monmouth Street. Wider sidewalks. Uh, my family and I moved to Red Bank, uh, in part because we grew up here. We, we lived in, uh, Baltimore for a while and we wanted to live in a place that was walkable, a walkable community. And we think we have that here. Um, we, we limited our, our move back to this area only to Red Bank. We didn't consider other options, things like the Broadwalk. Uh, really had us taking a close look at here. And the upside of these improvements to, uh, pedestrian improvements in the redevelopment plan mean that we may not need so many, uh, cars for residents to get to the train station. I know this is a concern that was raised where, uh, how will current residents be able to park to get to the train station? But, I mean, Red Bank's not all that big. We're going to have a 5K this Saturday. It runs almost from one border to the other. And, uh, I think if there are improvements to getting to the train station from other places in Red Bank, maybe we don't need as many cars as we thought. And, um, this being a transit oriented development project, I think many of the new residents will be attracted to this development because it is next to transit, um, and they will maybe not have a daily car commute. And so, in summary, those are the two points I want to make that I don't think have been made before. The first, that I think we have an opportunity to increase housing supply that will help with affordability, which is top of mind for many people. And we have a chance to have more complete streets that can help with the, um, car concerns that have been raised previously. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Name and address, please.
Uh, Sartan Talip.
Just repeat that so I can read it.
My name?
Yes.
Uh, Sartan Talip.
Would you please speak into a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, can't hear you.
That's me.
I, Sartan.
Could you, could you just spell your name, sir?
S.E.R.T.A.N., last name's T.A.L.I.P.
And your address, please?
Uh, 11 Kimberly Court, Apartment 45, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Sartan Talip and a Red Bank resident and proud member of Labor's Local 77. I fully support the train station redevelopment project. This project will benefit our community and create much needed job opportunities for local residents. I approve this project. Let's move Red Bank forward together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tyrone Shields, 280 Paul State Avenue, Clipper Park. Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and members of the Red Bank community. I'm here speaking proudly on behalf of our business manager and the men and women of the construction trades, especially our laborers from Lyona Local 77. We're here tonight to express our strong support for the Red Bank Train Station Redevelopment Project and to emphasize why this project must be built with skilled, trained, and safety oriented labor. Our workforce has spent years honing skills necessary to deliver complex infrastructure projects like this one on time, on budget, and to the highest safety standards. We're not just building stations and redevelopments around them, we're building lifelines for the people who rely on public transportation every single day. But it's not just about bricks and mortar. It's about people. Good construction jobs mean more than a paycheck. They mean health insurance for families, retirement security after decades of hard work, access to training that keeps our workers and our public safe. These are careers that support families, strengthen communities, and create a pipeline of local talent that will serve Red Bank and New Jersey for years to come. We urge the council and all project stakeholders to prioritize responsible, responsible contractors who invest in local workers and uphold high standards. Let this project re-share, reflect our shared values of economic opportunity, safety, and pride in public service. We're ready to go to work and we're ready to build something that Red Bank can be proud of for generations. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
I think everyone's going to take note of this mic technique.
I like that.
Everyone could hear him.
Sounds good.
Anyone else?
Question? More so than, um, a comment.
Name and address first.
Sorry, my name is Jamie Lern, 91 Manor Drive, Red Bank. Um, so as far as the parking that's going to be affected by, for us commuters, I'm not an everyday commuter, but I do pay, um, the, you know, six month at a time, just so when I do need to commute, there will be a spot on the. Just so when I do need to commute, there will be a spot on the east side for me there. Do you have a sense of how much parking is going to be in this new world? I hear what people are saying about, you know, it would be great if there, if people can walk to the train. I cannot. We live in New Jersey. We don't live in, you know, the Carolinas where it's a pretty mild temperature. It's so hot in the summer. It's freezing and, you know, rainy all winter. I'm commuting with a backpack on. Walking is not an option. So I just wanna make sure that for people like me that have lived here for a really long time and, you know, now in this new world, we don't have to commute every day, that we will still be able to access parking. The pricing isn't gonna go up to something totally insane. And that, you know, we'll be able to get those parking spots.
Susan, do you have some numbers? I don't think there's been any testimony yet about parking prices.
You don't know the pricing?
We don't know that. And that's something we'll get into at the site plan when they bring us an actual plan.
Also, likely negotiate that with the developers, part of the.
It's one less thing we have to do.
But I believe, I believe they are setting aside a hundred and fifty spots specifically for commuters.
How many are there now?
Oh, I don't know. There's a lot.
Far more than that, but if you go by there most any day of the week, those lots, there's not more than a hundred and fifty cars there that I've ever seen. And I dropped my daughter off a couple of days a week.
New Jersey Transit is the one who came up with that number. They thought they would have more traffic. They would like to be increasing their ridership, obviously. So if they thought there was more of a demand for it, they would have, they definitely would have, you know, asked for more spots. That number came from them.
So we don't have any way of, you know, there's no way that I can ensure that I'm gonna be one of those ones that can get a parking spot. I've lived here for a really long time. I was also on a waiting list, you know, for eight years before COVID. So I just don't, I don't wanna run into that again. Commuting is, you know, is annoying enough as it is. I just wanna know that I'm gonna be able to get some kind of spot.
Nobody here is gonna guarantee you a parking spot. So let me tell you that right now. But as the mayor said, nobody wants more parking spots than New Jersey Transit because they want more ridership. And they've asked for a hundred and fifty parking spaces. That's their land. We'll, I hope, have someone from New Jersey Transit testify to all of that when we do the site plan later this year. But to guarantee you a spot isn't gonna happen. And we don't know how much it's gonna cost right now. That's something that will happen when we do the site plan.
And does Red Bank have any, any say in that? Or it's all New Jersey Transit that will set the parking fees?
It's their land, but the council gets this after we do. And I guess we could discuss it further with New Jersey Transit. We could ask them.
When you say we, though, it wouldn't be this board.
It wouldn't be this board. It would be them. It would be the council.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, this board can't dictate parking arrangements with New Jersey Transit, but our council will be discussing that.
We're just not there in the process yet. I mean, there's a lot of things that we haven't finalized with, yeah, but.
Wait, wait.
I hear you.
For that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Robert J. Fricker, seventeen Mountain Street, Red Bank, New Jersey. Been living here for ten plus years. I served on the zoning board for two years. And I just wanna say thank you to all of you guys because it seems like you're working with, you know, the contractors and everybody to make this project work. And I do believe it is a great, I, you know, it's gonna come together and, you know, really improve the town. And as a Local Nine member, I would just like to say on behalf of my, my Local Nine plumbers and pine fitters, you have all of our support behind this project.
Thank you. Appreciate you saying something. Name an address, please.
My name's Peter Bontempo. I live at twenty-one Bluff Edge in Islands, New Jersey.
Oh, your last name?
B as in boy, O.N.T.E.M.P.O. I'm an architect and planner by trade. I've worked with the, in the DC area for a while with a contemporary of the designer of this building, S.K.N.I. And there are two things I'd like to talk about, about this project is the overall design and the affordable units, which I'm sure is a big topic. And I know that a lot of people can talk about this better than I can. But one issue that I think hasn't been brought up yet is the type of unit that's available. You know, I crunched the numbers. There's thirty, one hundred seventy-eight units in this project, eight of which are three bedroom units. A lot of families need units and with the predominant one bedroom and studio unit counts in this project, there's not a lot of opportunities for families to move into this building, which I know is also a very big deal. Secondly, you know, I've been inspired by Red Bank my entire life. It inspired me to go into my trade. I love the architectural character of Red Bank. And, you know, I had my first date here. My, my friend died at Riverview Hospital. I have a very deep history with Red Bank. But to see this development and its architectural character is a little bit disappointing. And the fact that it's gotten this far is a little bit troublesome. I've worked on several entitlements like this in the past. And at this point, the architectural characters hardly change much. And this development does not reflect, in my opinion, the spirit of Red Bank or the architectural character. Behind the project by the numbers, I think it's great that you're adding units, you're adding density and you're providing for your community. But I think that architectural character is not at all up to par with the very accessible beauty of Broad Street and a lot of great brickwork and window details and everything. I am available to help in any way that I can, if need be, to facilitate a better design for this project. But that's all I'd like to say. Free time.
The favor, I don't claim to have any architectural expertise whatsoever. I just know if I don't like the way something looks.
The town's building on Broad Street's five stories, so you're right on about that.
Yeah, and I don't love that building either. So if you wanna write us an email about what you don't like and what you would like to see, send it to Shauna. Her email's on the, on the planning board section of the Borough website.
Okay.
She'll share it around to the board. I'm happy to look at it and we're happy to share it with the builder. Before they come later in the year with having done what you, the work of all the renderings and all of the architecturals, which you know just digs them into a deeper hole of, we don't wanna change anything.
Right.
So send us an email, let us look at it and we'll happily share it with them and share our thoughts. We're happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
I said last time, I don't particularly love this development at all. And I know people freaked out when I said that, but I do still think it's an important step for Red Bank.
Agreed.
Having grown up really in that train station area as a kid, I'm not gonna say anything else till I get yelled at, but.
Fair enough.
Uh, thank you for coming up. I appreciate it.
Now, just see that it's not too late to change the design. If the rendering is, or conceptual rendering is that they lopped off the story to show it accurately as to what's actually allowed, but things like the requirements for brick and all the architectural standards, I think, gives the board some flexibility when they come for site plan. And that hasn't fully been reflected in the materials for all the renderings. So that's.
Okay. Well, I'll write to Shauna.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
And just to be clear, as a planning board member, these renderings that are in the package, the way I'm perceiving them is strictly to illustrate mass. Nothing about the architectural character and from where I sit has been vetted and approved by the board, correct?
Correct, until we get to site plan. I mean, the rendering, I, I made a joke with the developer when I said, they've got a lady sitting on the ground. I'm like, no one's gonna sit on the ground and eat lunch.
So a man.
Table there for God's sake.
Balcony on one of the renderings.
Yeah, so, you know, but yeah, this is just a representation at this point.
Right, so just so the public's clear.
Yeah, the site plan is what really matters.
Matter being shown or, you know.
That was not clear in the packages.
You could take all the facades off them completely for all the planning board, if, you know, concerned with at this point. It's really just about the overall mass and how the, you know.
And there is language in there that says it's in no way an approval of the design. It's really illustrative nature, conceptual. The chair's point is about mass.
Speaking of which, can I get an answer to my question that I had earlier?
About West Street?
Yeah, about West Street.
So the word still is encouraged. And so we could change that if the board wants to make that change to something a little bit stronger like bird. I have hesitations if they require because that's a little bit binding.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this in the last meeting. If the board wants to change it from encourage, they should change it from encouraged because encouraged doesn't mean much. And it's so if you mean it shall, if that's what the.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Board is, then you should change it to shell.
Yeah, remind me what you were talking about.
So this, this has to do with West Street and the mass along West Street, right? So we expanded the setback, right?
And they're breaking up into individual entrances.
Talked about creating an environment where you have separate entrances, you know, to units on the ground floor so that you don't have, you know, kind of a commercial type, you know.
Which they agreed to and we can hold them to.
Yeah, I think Wilson's looking for some language. I can read what's in the plan right now. It's just two sentences, like. Thank you.
I'm gonna go sit down.
It currently says the residential scale of West Street between Monmouth and Chestnut Streets shall be maintained using building setbacks, landscaping and screening of parking garages and similar infrastructure. Individual apartment entrances with stoops, steps, porticos and similar features are encouraged. So the question probably really is, is it encouraged strongly?
What would you replace it with to make it stronger? But not too strongly that our attorney is upset about it.
Well, your attorney's not gonna be upset. It's your plan, not mine. But you have to decide whether it's something that you definitively want and it has to happen or whether you just wanna encourage it.
And we throw in.
Shall, wrongly encouraged. For some reason, they weren't able to do a building stoop on every unit. They would probably have to get.
A variance.
Time wave or maybe.
Or something like that, yes.
If they came for you for site plan, which isn't the end of the world.
Right. The strongly encouraged help?
I don't think, again, it's strongly encouraged is not a definitive, you have to do it. You should, you shall earlier in the, earlier in the paragraph, just you shall, that this shall be done.
Because we talked about it and they approved, they agreed to do it.
So then, then you shall, if that's what the board wants.
I'm okay with changing it to shall if anyone.
No, it already says shall. First sentence said shall.
The second one says strongly, it says encouraged. So encouraged is a variable.
Was, you know, the overall residential scale.
Right.
You have no choice in that. The stoops and porticos were, here's how we think you should do it.
Which is what we wanted and what they agreed to. I'm okay changing that.
Shall include stoops, blah, 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 whatever you said.
Anyone opposed to that?
Right, but it's gonna, you're gonna have to rewrite the sentence to get the shell to fix.
Consistent with, you know, the point Mr. Bontempo was speaking.
Philip Antune, forty-six, Phil Antune, I'm too sure. Forty-six Chestnut Street. I live right around the corner. So if there's additional traffic, obviously I would be affected and I, it's really not my concern. Seventy plus affordable units mixed in with market rate units across the street from mass transit and walkable to anywhere in town, paid primarily through private funding. I don't think you can come up with a better scenario for affordable housing if you tried. And if you do any homework on affordable housing, you know, a lot of the things I'm hearing, the reasons against it, this is why we have a massive shortage of affordable housing. So if you look at it from that point of view, again, I would be affected by any additional traffic. I, it really doesn't, I don't care if I can't get in my driveway. If I know seventy plus families can get into affordable housing, one of the issues with people also is they have no way to get anywhere. You're across the street from a bus stop and a train station. So as we start to think about what are we really dealing with here? Seventy plus families getting into a unit that they otherwise would not be able to get into and they can walk to work or they can take a train or a bus. And also the second part is just the, the local economy. You're creating jobs for architects, engineers. I see a lot of construction people back here. You're constructing, you're generating work there. You're paying interest to the bank. The developer's giving a return on equity back to their investors and you have more people driving the local economy, more people shopping, more people buying. So when you look at it from that point of view, from an economic point of view, the long term benefit to Red Bank. And again, I'm gonna go ninety-nine percent is affordable housing for me. I think we'd be remiss if we passed up this opportunity to, to take a step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Anyone else? Keep in mind, my cat is very hungry right now. Come on up. I'm about to text my daughter to go over and feed him.
Does me, Dan? Linda Cohen, twenty-eight Riverside Avenue, Red Bank. I'm here because I have been here for the last twenty-six years and my feeling about what Red Bank is about. And I am looking at all of the development that I've seen going on in Red Bank and we have plenty of housing going on everywhere. Seems to me on every corner, everywhere there are huge affordable housing and regular buildings going on and it is becoming very massive. And I'm beginning to feel like what is critical mass? What does it take to create a critical mass where you can't get through your town? You have to be in Shoesbury for twenty minutes before I can get home, which is very far. My business is right in downtown Red Bank. There's no way to move customers to come into any of the businesses in town. Everybody is talking about they would love to live in Red Bank. The quality that attracts people to Red Bank is the ability to shop in the downtown, the ability to go to a restaurant, the ability to move around town. And we are cutting that off at the pass in a horrible manner, in my opinion. Of course, my opinion doesn't matter because I'm not gonna be here forever. But what I see happening in Red Bank is very disturbing. It was a beautiful town. It was very, very enjoyable walking around. Now you dodge bullets every time you walk across the street. The cars are going a hundred miles an hour. People are ready to kill each other for a parking spot. We could have been parking in many different times, but we decided not to do that for many reasons, which I still don't understand after being on the planning board. But it doesn't matter. I just want people to keep in mind that what I'm hearing from my fellow business people in town is that businesses are coming in and they're going out. There's no real draw to be in Red Bank. And the bottom line is that Red Bank is also being circumvented on Google because it's such a nightmare to get in and out. It's nice to go to a restaurant in town, but when you have to walk three blocks to bring your dinner home because there's no place to pull in, you have to keep all of these things in mind. That's the quality of life. I love the quality of life here. I enjoyed it, but now it's becoming more and more difficult. And every time I walk to work or walk anywhere, I see more multifamily dwellings going up. And some of them are not very attractive and some of them impinge on shade and green spaces and architecture and a lot of other things. I'm very disappointed. That's all I want to explain.
Thanks, Linda. I will say on parking, we go to the same restaurant every single Friday night for dinner and never, ever have I not been able to find a parking space within a one minute walk of this restaurant. You wanna come up and argue with me, come out of our, I just don't.
I don't, I don't wanna argue.
What about people from outside? They don't know where you go.
I, I don't.
Literally fifty percent of the time I park in the parking lot of the restaurant. So anyone from out of town can find that. Or I park in a meter, less than a minute away. I just don't think. No, I don't get, I don't.
Pay tickets to the customers.
I, I know a lot of, I know a lot of stores do that in town. I think it's ridiculous. I have never gotten a parking ticket in Red Bank in the thirty-five years I've lived here.
Been here, Dan. Look at your position.
No one knows, no one knows who I am. I assure you, none of the parking people have any idea who I am and they surely don't know when they pull up to my car to give me a ticket.
I, I would, I would like to ask one question. Are you aware of, of how many people are not eating in the downtown? That we've closed the artery off so that people have to fight to get literally in and out of town because we have broad.
I'm not aware of that.
I should make you aware as a business person.
Well, none of the people, none of the restaurateurs that regularly call me when we approve a restaurant to yell at me have ever said to me, oh my God, Broadwalk is killing my business. No one has said that.
Maybe you should talk to some of the other businesses or maybe they're already gone.
Residents.
And that's the problem. There are many businesses.
All right, so, so we can't have people screaming. Alright, so so we can't have people screaming from the audience or yelling from the audience. So so let one person who talks who's up at the mic talk. Okay?
I'll just, I'll share one thing. I think it's uh just the, this is not necessarily towards anyone. I think in general, right? Keeping things in perspective that to me personally, quality of life is not depending on walking three blocks to get food to a restaurant or not. Quality of life is whether or not we have uh uh access to healthcare, access to transportation. Access to equity. And I just want to point out that one of the conversations about what actually helps gentrification, since so many people talk about it. Are the hard facts and the hard facts and the hard things to swallow. Is that in order for us to be in equitable place where there is affordable housing, a lot of things have to go out the window, including. The idea that there's simply not room for more. Um, because we don't know who they'll be or what they'll do or what they'll be into. So all that to say. Um, my office is also downtown in Red Bank and uh we have a lot of people that come and visit because we do all kinds of things and. Um, I think the best thing that I've seen, uh, and I think there's somebody here for, or maybe not from River Center. Is uh the constant advertising on all of the other places where you can find parking, um, walking in a block in a walkable town. Um, you know, it's, it's just definitely not my concern. I just want to uphold that for me, the main concern about this. Um, and I just want to also say thank you to the folks that are here doing union work um to to show their support. I'm grateful that uh people do that still. Unions are crucial to to all of our race. Um. But I'm grateful that folks are here and again, my biggest concern with this is not so much uh the project as much as what we're willing to trade off for our comforts.
Uh, Miss Cohen, what is your business?
My business?
Yeah.
I'm an optician.
Okay, where where are you located?
On Broad Street.
Let's go. Can you just come back up?
Thank you.
Okay.
Don't come up here and complain that you don't want any restaurants or stores. I don't want to hear it.
Oh, I'm John Anderson. Um, I am the chairman of Red Bank River Center. We use River Center as a rest English Plaza. Um, I actually have a contrary uh view to Ms. Cohen. We've known each other for many years and I have a lot of respect for her. Um, as a businesswoman in town who's got quite a legacy and a great shop. Um, but Red Bank River Center appreciates the housing component. Uh, we believe that the people that are going to live in these units will dine in our restaurants and will shop in our shops. So we've never had any issue with the units themselves. Our one and only one concern had to do with the amount of commercial space and the board and the developer have graciously addressed that. So we support the project. We support the units.
Thank you.
Hello, uh Drew Logan, twenty six Allen Place. Um, I know the uh the chairman and the the rest of the uh planning board already know my views. On how tall I think the development should be, so I won't rehash that. Um.
You wanted more units.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, I, well, if we're gonna talk about it, I think we should go back to six stories. Uh, but my uh my actual point is. Just really quick, I I would really hate to have to come back here in another six weeks if. We take the same complaints from the same ten people that are here to poo poo on any development that's happening in town. I think anybody that cares about what's happening here knows that this is a great, great addition to the town. We should be building as many affordable units as possible. Uh, an influx of four hundred units worth of new residents will dramatically affect. The businesses in downtown Red Bank for the good and I don't think there's any. Any rationale to argue against that. Um, so. Yeah, if we could just not get in the trap of uh listening to the naysayers that will say the same thing over and over for selfish aesthetic reasons. Um, they're gonna.
One of those people.
I know, I I know and I I walk out of my apartment and I stare at a ten story concrete apartment building. I don't complain about it because it doesn't affect my life.
I used to live there. I loved that building.
Like ten story apartment buildings.
I liked it in nineteen sixty seven.
Okay.
Now.
Let the young people have their nineteen sixty seven, that's all I'm saying there.
Yeah, so I look at that every day. Doesn't bother me, doesn't affect my life, but then again, I I lived in Manhattan for a little bit, so uh. I know you would, you would probably hate it there. Um.
Probably.
Uh, so yeah, let's uh please get this done because it's gonna be great.
Thank you. Ben?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Adrian Bilau, two sixty six South Pearl Street.
Oh, your last.
Something has to be done at the train station. That's no argument that something needs to be done because it is an eyesore at times, but.
What what's the eyesore? I'm sorry, I was writing.
Sore is the fact that it, how big it is and also the location of it. I think that's what people have a problem with because. We have been divided in Red Bank, east side, west side. People feel like now you've done everything on the east side, you're moving over to the west side. And the Latino community has built up that the west side on Shoesbury Avenue. And I really think it's going to like be a slap in their face with all these people that are coming in with this large building. And the fact that. The affordable housing, and I'm all for that. We definitely need affordable housing because I know several people in Red Bank right now that can't afford to stay here. And when I moved here in seventy nine, we had affordable housing. People could go to college, they could come back home, they could live here. They can't be here anymore. We're getting an influx of outsiders that are coming in and the young man who spoke before that, he has the young man attitude. It doesn't affect me.
Right.
I'm looking at our community, what it looks like, what it can be, what it was. I read an article, an old article, Red Bank is one of the hippest towns in New Jersey. It's a quaint town. And I think that we're losing that. Yes, we have to progress along, but that building, I think, is out of place. Does not fit. Now, maybe the young man who said the architect could be different, it could be lower. And I'm thinking too that once they put that there, just like they put the rail there. All that area on Bridge Avenue, some contractor is going to buy it and here we're going to be here again, fighting against them building something that's out of place. And also, like I said, moving along and people just don't feel comfortable with that. And I think even though there are not a lot of people here, I was at the polls yesterday. And sometimes you're talking to the people who you're at polls and then people come in and they make their um, you know, the in cut uh talking with each other. And there's a lot of people in Red Bank and I'm really disappointed that there isn't more people here voicing their opinion, but they are a lot. Who are uncomfortable with this, the height of this building and where it's being placed. And if they can do something as far as affordable housing and make it more presentable and available for people. That can afford it because even if it becomes affordable housing, it's not going to be affordable for young people who are moving into Red Bank. Thank you.
Thank you.
I uh I welcome those comments and I'll just say that um I actually am one of the people that helps a lot of those kids on the west side go to college. That's what I do um for the most, for most of the time um in my career and that is why I'm so passionate about affordable housing because. I do see them go off to college and come back and I help them go to get, you know, their first professional career job. And I know what their salaries look like and I know that these types of housings are actually what's going to prevent me from losing that young. Uh, talent that we have. I have a lot of young folks that are currently in college who are not here, as you mentioned. Because they're away or they're doing something else, but I actually uh spoke to a couple of young people. Um, maybe one of them might be able to jump online. Another one is running his wellness group tonight, so the meeting didn't work for her, but. Those are the young professionals that were raised in Red Bank that I helped to mentor into college that are looking for affordable houses to come back to Red Bank. So I just want to be mindful again. I I deeply hear the concerns of the west side, believe me. I deeply hear the concerns of the west side. Uh, and I work with those folks closely to make sure and the school systems to make sure that we can get those kids to college in a professional job. In affordable housing, despite people's dislike for the aesthetics. Uh, that's the sacrifice to keep a kid on the west side in my eyes. I'm not gonna live in one of those apartments either. I couldn't afford them. I'm glad I got lucky, just like many people here did when they bought their house. Right? And I get the, the, it doesn't affect me, but I think and, you know, I welcome the community member to come back and 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 clarify if they feel the need to, but. To me, that it doesn't affect me in my mind means it is just because I don't like looking at it, it doesn't affect me. But that unit does affect someone's willingness to have affordable housing. So despite my dislike for the aesthetics. And I'm not big on building. But I'm just being brutally honest with myself as well as a community member, understanding that they're gonna build. This is not our land, correct? We don't own this land. This is New Jersey Transit. The best we got is our ability to put our voice into it and I think people here have come before to say that. We did take their considerations into 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 mind. Um, I think it's unfair to say we didn't. I mean, that that's the main disagreement between the chair and I. I don't think that we should have gone down to five floors. Not if we lose affordable housing, just for someone to like the site. Right? And that he disagrees with that and I'm grateful that folks are here talking about how they feel about it, but for me. Like I said, I I'm mindful of saying that other people are coming in because some people are just getting to stay and I'm rooting for that.
Thanks, it's all. I told you I love the driveway, right? They did a great job. Yes, I cut through your street to come home every day.
Oh, you and everybody else. Um, so first I want to say thanks for knocking the sixth floor, sixth floor.
Name an address again, so we have it on the record.
Twenty Irving Place. Uh, thanks for knocking the sixth floor off. That's great. I'm also happy to see that the stoops are now required, not encouraged.
Um, on West Street.
On West Street, yeah, yeah. Um. I was also happy to see the addition of another possible pedestrian bike walkway included on the 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 new main New Jersey Transit line of the. Um, uh, uh, of the the train. Um.
What we want, you mean from from Dr. James Parker Boulevard?
From Dr. James Parker Boulevard up to.
We've, we've asked New Jersey Transit to consider that.
So.
That that's, that's not a done deal.
Well, that, that was gonna be my complaint after a thanking Uber had in there that it's. It's not even uh encouraged. It's a potential. Like it, it it doesn't even say we want this. It's just sort of, you know, this is something that could happen.
We've made, we've made it very clear that we want it. It's not gonna go away. I walked it last night. There's more than enough room. And I I understand that they're concerned about safety and a couple of six foot fences on either side of this pedestrian walkway, I think would allay their fears. But I think New Jersey Transit will testify to that. At site plan and it's something we very much want. Will it happen? I don't know. I though, after walking it last night, really feel like there's more than enough width. To put a reasonable sized walkway. From that grade crossing at Dr. Parker Boulevard all the way down. And I don't know how much time it's gonna save someone walking, but I'm gonna do the other route tomorrow and time myself, but it'll be the distance of walking from Maple. Down Chestnut to the train station, that part of the triangle.
Yeah.
Is the time that potentially could be saved for somebody. So hopefully, we'll, we're gonna get New Jersey Transit to say yes to that because that is very much. All their property, every, every inch of it.
Even if we don't say you have to do this, having the plan and having it shown on a map is important stuff. To continue that conversation with New Jersey Transit.
Okay, um. Another disappointment that I have to bring up, uh, the green requirements are still just encouraged. They don't have to do a single green thing on this project. It can be the the dirtiest house, the dirtiest building possible. Um, I'd really like to see something a little more. Uh, even if you did something like over at the V N A where there were, there was some bones thrown to them if they could, if they put in certain green features.
I I feel like there's something in there where we, it said we have to do the highest standard of. Environmental building lead certified. Isn't there a whole?
Yes, yes.
I don't.
Says sustainable slash green site and building design methods shall be included in maximum, maximum extent of practical. Will be required in the future redevelopment agreement. Then it goes on to say examples, types of green. By use, it doesn't bind them to any one type. If that's still to be determined, but it says they shall include it.
Ten points, ten points from Dan Reardon on that one, folks.
Well, that's unusual.
Yeah, but it says uh uh practical. So who says it's practical? Because so far, this negotiation has been led by denials. Uh, the committee.
I stopped reading what you.
But beyond practical gets into the site plan.
Exactly, that's.
We don't have a site plan yet.
We can, we can, when we get the site plan, we can make the determinations as to what we think is practical.
The, okay, but the, in the, in the V N A redevelopment plan. It was laid out. Here are, here are concrete things that you can do and if you do them, you'll get more density.
That was in the site plan, not that, not.
That was in the redevelopment plan.
But we beat that to death during the site plan of that project. They got the dog, they get dogs peeing on the roof of the building, which I swear to God, I want to see their engineering on.
Alright, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's shell, but.
And and I also just want.
Go ahead, Susan.
Next section. That's new buildings in redevelopment District A, which is primarily this development. Shall meet M J E B A green building standards for type one construction or equivalent levels of sustainability. Achievement and then there's the reference to what those standards are. So that is something that they will be required to do.
Okay, good.
You really fell down my list on this one, Dan.
Uh, sorry. Um. The other thing I I wanted to ask is, uh, it, it seems like everybody wants eighty affordable units. Why don't we put eighty affordable units in the redevelopment plan? Why is it twenty percent? Twenty percent is the minimum. That's like, that's what they would do if we weren't giving them this redevelopment plan. They'd do twenty percent because that's what the code says for development this size. Why don't you say eighty? Eighty redevelop, we want eighty affordable units.
They won't do it if they do.
Ninety for that matter, but. But say eighty.
Let's just make it an even hundred, Dan.
Yeah, there we go. Hundred.
They will build it.
And the last thing, I just, I draft that I saw figures three and five were out of date. Um. It had, because of the changes that were made in the setbacks and the that, the change in the, changing the walkway to a. Now. So.
A really illustrative on massing principles. Um, they were prepared in our office, so. Really up to the board whether you want us to read, frankly, I don't know if there's a budget left or we do those figures. Um, whether it's five or six stories, it's the massing is really about the the width and the length of the building, not necessarily height.
Well, so, but the the walkway is also. Not what.
We'll take a look at that.
Anyway. All right, thank you.
This is way too late for me.
Brado, seventy three Linden Place.
What's your first name?
Frank.
Welcome, Frank.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to voice my support for this redevelopment plan. I appreciate all the work that the board has done on this to date. Listening to comments and feedback from the community and I appreciate the community's. Uh, feedback and communication on the matter. Simply put, uh, first and foremost, I want to recognize Ms. Hernandez's comments. I've agreed with everything that she's said so far this evening. Um, I think affordability is a huge issue in this town. This clearly uh takes steps forwards in addressing that. I've made, I've lived in Red Bank for about thirteen years. Um, my family continues to live here due to. The quality of life that we feel we have by uh what this town brings to us. This project only stands to expand that between walkability, between diversity of people, diversity of businesses. Um, I lived right up the street for a number of years from where this project would be on Oakland Street. And I can say firsthand, this is a massive improvement over what is there now. Um, I think, you you know, I don't want to let perfection, I agree, there's probably flaws in the development plan so far, however. I don't think perfection should be the stopping point of this. Um, I think we should be moving it forward. We should kick this to the council. Uh, and starting to get site plans and starting to actually move this forward. This is a good thing for Red Bank, in my opinion. And it's projects like these that are keeping me and my family here instead of moving to other places. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Frank. Come on up, sir. Keep in mind, my cat texted me ten minutes ago. Didn't know where his shrimp is.
Two cats at home. I need to get back and feed them as well. Um, uh, Steve Ansell, uh, thirty nine Branch Avenue.
And father of soon to be graduating senior.
Absolutely.
And Eagle Scout.
And indeed, absolutely. And R T C, um, recipient. There you go, exactly. And um. Fellow classmate to your son.
First of all, I just wanted to sort of commend the, the board for their hard work. You've obviously spent a lot of time thinking about this. Uh, especially Mr. Mancuso, obviously you've pushed the group to spend time to consider and work hard to, to change certain things that people, or most of the people here had concerns about. You know, reducing it from six stories to five, although it's still sixty feet high, um, increasing the setbacks, various other things that won't go into detail on now, cuz we've pretty much covered most of that. Unfortunately, sort predominantly, this is still a huge luxury apartment. Okay, you know, the, the, the affordable units are extremely important, and I absolutely get that. Part of the concern that I have, and I know a lot of the people in the town have got, is and again, picking up on Mr. Poku's point where, you know, he mentioned a document or a presentation that New Jersey Transit gave recently. And ironically, it was actually co-authored by Megan Massey, who's a member of your board, um, which was, you know, basically it's, um, transit-oriented development in your downtown gentle density unlocking the missing middle housing. So ultimately, what that document and what that presentation puts forward is it talks about the affordability, you know, the housing affordability crisis in New Jersey. And it sort of proposes, or it puts forward, or it, 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 yeah, proposes a, you know, a, a different type of, um, building, proposes a different type of, um, structure. Uh, it proposes a different type of density. Uh, you know, it talks about duplexes, it talks about quads, it talks about the possibility of townhouses. Now, I get it, you know, in terms of being able to create probably the number of, of, of affordable units, um, you know, creating something which is, you know, a much, much smaller development is probably gonna be difficult. I get that.
Part of the reason it's probably gonna be difficult is because of what I'm sure New Jersey Transit wants at, as their end of this deal. And if, if, if if they would be happy with townhouses and half the number of units, I'm sure we would be too. But New Jersey Transit's got their hand out here to the developer in a big way. I don't know how big. But I can only imagine it's a significant amount of money that's going back to the state on this one. Which isn't a good reason by itself to do it.
But that's part of my point is if they are, if they have a proposal which has come from somebody who's on your board, who ironically, again, has decided to recuse herself from all of these, these deliberations. Yeah, she works for New Jersey Transit. She.
Yeah, she legally.
Say this, let me just say, Ms. Massey did not decide to recuse herself. She didn't have a choice.
Okay.
Because New Jersey Transit is property owner, and this is all about New Jersey Transit property. She can't sit on the board. So I'm sure she would have loved to have, have served on for this application, I mean, for this project, but she isn't able to. So it's not that she, you know, somehow just said, oh, yeah, I better not. It's, she's not allowed to.
It's a shame she isn't, because if she's the, the co-author of this report, then maybe she could have prospectively or possibly come up with some different options. You know, and again, maybe I'm, maybe I'm living in a dream world, but, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, well, if New Jersey Transit are proposing this particular type of development, lower level, lower density, why have we got to this point where there wasn't an option for us to explore other options, other developments? It seems like.
They chose the developer, we didn't.
Okay, but what it seems, to be honest with you, maybe I'm completely wrong, but what it seems that we've done, you know, with respect to you and respect to everybody here, is that we've taken their general plan, and what we've done is we've just fiddled with it a bit, and we've served it back up again as our plan or as our proposal. That's what it seems like without us really trying to try and find something else. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what it seems like to me and to a lot of the people that certainly I've spoken to in the town, you know?
Yeah.
No question.
Yeah.
I can have.
Oh, sure.
Straight off. Thank you. You know, missing middle housing, for those who aren't as familiar as the folks who've read the report, it generally refers to lower density from a, you know, built form standpoint, but also usually middle income as well. And so it does support things like townhouses, two-family duplex homes. Uh, and it's fantastic that New Jersey Transit is starting to look at this typology because it is something that is really lacking in the state. I'm a big fan of two-family houses. I lived in one for the first five years of my marriage. It was great. Um, and we don't have enough of them. However, from a planning perspective, that level of density and that design is not appropriate when you're right at the train station in an, like, fairly urbanized downtown, which Red Bank is. And so I think what New Jersey Transit is trying to gently suggest with that type of housing in that report is that there are other communities where you might not have it developed downtown. It's a little bit lower density overall. Your, your maximum height might be two stories. For those communities, that type of missing middle housing is really the most appropriate housing for here, for Red Bank, for, you know, the type of downtown that you have, and literally right at the train station. As a planner, I wouldn't support missing middle housing at this location.
And if I could get both of these buildings down to four stories, I would.
Hey, I'm sure you're, you're you look like a very powerful man from where I'm sitting.
I, I, listen, I, I look over my back at night when I walk through town, so. I mean, Steve, Steve Denhols is a little older than me, but, you know, you never know.
The last point I wanted to make, and, and this might be a little controversial, but, um, in terms of the affordable housing that Red Bank has to, um, have a plan for, which we need to present to the state at the end of the month. Eighty how, eighty affordable units is, gets us pretty close to the one fifty, is it one fifty-three, one fifty-four that we need to get to in the next ten years? I wonder whether there is a very strong push to get this development through simply because it delivers a, a big chunk of affordable housing, which is gonna show the state that we've actually managed to, you know, we've actually managed to get a lot closer to where we need to be.
Supposing that were the case? And we've had no discussion like that here.
None.
What would be wrong with that?
I agree. I would also wonder.
I guess, I guess part of it is the thought that if we've got ten years to get there.
That number, by the way, will never stay the same for the next ten years because it hasn't for the last ten years. There's no way that number's gonna stay for the next ten years. If it stays two years, I'll be surprised. In ten years, it'll be two hundred.
I, for, for me, Steve.
Yeah.
Regardless of what the requirements are from the state for affordable housing, it's the right thing to do. We need to provide affordable housing. So
Absolutely.
regardless of whether or not there's a push to meet our fair share of housing obligations, if we have an opportunity here to provide such a big chunk of affordable housing, and by the way, this is not a, um, this is not a new concept. We've been talking about in Red Bank, increased density at the train station area for thirty years. It's been in the master plan, and we just redid it last year and reaffirmed it. Even when I was, when I was running for mayor the first time, I said, I support, you know, transit village designation and train station area high density is, seems appropriate to me. That's where you should be placing your high density next to public transportation.
No, I think.
Keep in mind, never once in all my years of serving on this board has anyone from the state ever reached out to me in any way, shape, or form about any application we've ever had. And I'll include the mayor and council on that. No one has, I, now often I sit next to the mayor or a council person here, but no one has ever reached out to me in all those years, and it's thirty-two years, and said, you know, we'd really like this or that, or what do you think about doing it this way? Never has it happened. And if someone from the state called me, it would be a much longer conversation that they'd really rather not have. Megan hides from me because every time I see her, I tell her what a mess New Jersey Transit is. And she says it's gonna get better, as she says to me every time.
Anyway. Those were the points I wanted to make. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Come on up, sir. Name an address, please.
David Cookson, seventy A West Front Street. I've, I've lived in Red Bank for twenty-five years. So I, I've seen a lot of changes like you all have, I'm sure. Your approval of the Bodman Pro- Project amazed me actually, and continues to amaze me because I cannot imagine what chaos that development is going to work. And having, having approved that, my faith in your ability to come up with a plan that would help Red Bank is zero. I, I, for, for example, we've heard New Jersey Transit. New Jersey Transit sends buses through here on a regular basis, holding eighty people. And on ninety-five percent of the time, there are two people on them. They need jitnes. That's what we need. We don't need these big buses with diesels and whatever. So, New Jersey Transit don't speak about how good they are. As far as this development is concerned, uh, I, I can't believe it's happening. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me. If you drive down West Front Street, well, by the way, Broad Street, you can't drive down anymore because for some unknown reason, you close it all week. I can understand that weekends, no problem. But why are you closing it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, when there is nobody there? I just walked down there today. There's nobody sitting out eating their dinners. So that's.
That's not a question this board can answer.
It's a statement, okay? Actually, could take it into consideration, though, because it doesn't make any sense because it's screwing up the traffic. The traffic now backs up to, to, into, into Fairhaven. It's, it's ridiculous, ridiculous. As far as, and this development is going to create even more traffic. And it, I haven't heard one plan about addressing the, 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 the traffic issue i- in Red Bank. I do seem to recall that a few years ago, there was, there was something said that was going to be a master plan of it, it certainly hasn't happened, uh, to, to date.
It definitely has, and you can get a copy of it on the Borough website.
When's it gonna happen?
It's happening.
We, we, we finished the master plan last year or the year before.
I'm not talking about master plans. I'm talking about the traffic situations.
I don't know when the circulation plan was, but part of the app, site plan application will be a traffic report.
And that's for that area, though.
For that, that development.
Yeah, but, I mean, the whole of Red Bank needs a, a, a traffic plan.
I don't disagree with you, but keep in mind, in the state of New Jersey, a planning board cannot deny an application for traffic.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't understand what that means.
Meaning if we think a, a site is going to generate five hundred trips a day, we can't deny the application because of that. It's against the law in New Jersey. It happened in ninety-one or ninety-two. The state changed that. You can't, can't deny a project for traffic. You have to do it for other reasons. And I worry about traffic a lot. It's one of the reasons I don't leave my house during the day.
Right.
But, um, it's really, we will get a traffic study from the applicant whenever they come back for site plan. Keep in mind, I have never read a traffic study that didn't support the project that paid them to do the study. So I don't really, I read the executive summary and I toss the rest of it away. But that is a part of the application of, of for site plan.
But there's no, you have no plan to address the traffic situation in Red Bank?
Part of the, I mean, the investment in the public transportation area is part of the plan to dissolve some of that traffic. That's why public transportation exists. Again, I just think to some degree, we just have to be honest about problems and solutions, right? I know that it comes down to comfort, and nobody wants to walk three blocks or go an extra, uh, parking spot, but again, traffic is usually created oftentimes because people want a parking spot right in front of where they're going. And it's understandable. It's comfortable, but accessibility is a huge thing, and I'm all for that, but we have to be honest that the solution to more traffic is less cars.
And I just.
No, no, but surely, a part of the problem is not just the, 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 uh, parking outside your front door or wherever. It's, it's the people who are going through it for, and trying to get onto thirty-five, onto the parkway.
This is, this is not just in Red Bank, too. I mean, this is anywhere you're driving on the shore in the summer. Try and drive through Ocean Township. I drive through Schuersberg. If you're coming up Route thirty-five, there's just and, and, and I think if we never built another unit in Red Bank, traffic would continue to get worse. They're talking about three hundred units at Monmouth Park. They're redoing the, uh, the mall.
Fourth Monmouth.
They're, what's that?
Or Monmouth.
Yeah, Fourth Monmouth.
Red Bank, please.
Yeah, I, my.
Red Bank.
My point is, I think that, again, without, I would, I would argue that the majority of traffic issues are people cutting through Red Bank, not necessarily the people that.
I don't disagree.
Right.
I don't disagree, but it creates a problem for everybody.
Yes.
And by the way, when are you gonna fix the roads?
In general, they're happening.
Tonight, tonight, we're paving like twelve roads.
Certainly not doing the roads coming into Red Bank.
It just did Maple Avenue.
With a bridge there, uh, down, uh, uh, by, um, at a rear, down there. Terrible.
Come to the next council meeting and argue with them about that, which is tomorrow night. Happy to address that with you. We will, we are not.
Many people here, we all have views and whatever, but I, I, I'm afraid, and I understand unfortunately, that many of these things are going over your heads because you have your own agendas. You, you, you've already made up your minds on many of these things, and it's very, very disappointing, I gotta say.
I would just say, I'm actually, in all of these meetings, I have very much been listening. I don't think I've spoken as much in them as I have tonight. But actually, I've heard every single person who's come up and everything that they've said, and I've taken that to heart and, and thought those things through, including many who, like you, are speaking about traffic or parking, but tr- traffic we have heard many times. But to me, obviously, when I take these things, I have to also rationalize them and what I understand about the town, too, cuz it's not an agenda as much as a, a worldview. I see what I see happening in Red Bank, a model of how it works. And one thing that undercuts a lot of that discussion for me is knowledge. I, I actually, I don't know if anyone else up here lives in a multifamily unit in the core of town. I do. I live at the Colony House. And the, in the time I lived there, in fifteen years, the refrain from people is always, I love living here because I don't have to get in my car. And I assume that the people who will self-select into a building like this would be of a similar mindset, enjoying the walkability of town, as do many friends of mine who live in also single family that are adjacent or even a little farther, uh, fields from the downtown. They love to walk into it, to bike into it, to walk with their kids. So there's such an appetite for that. It's hard for me to imagine that the majority of those folks are going to, uh, you know, see it as a tiny suburban lifestyle. So it's hard for me to, to really imagine that they're going to have the impact on traffic that people are trying to assert.
Well, even Red Bank, it is a community, certainly, but is made up of a lot of people coming in for restaurants and whatever. And I don't think they have the same viewpoint that you do.
Well, the studies show that, uh, it's to some degree generational. Younger folks do prefer places that are walkable. I love this town being walkable. I love not ever having to need a car because you can toss it up to a number of things, the economy being a great one. It's expensive to have a car. It's a level of status to have a car. So that's why, to me, the plus side of this is affordable housing. And I, I go back to, I think it should go back.
Yeah, ask a question.
Sure.
What, what, what is the difference, what is the differential that makes affordable housing different from the regular pricing?
But, but, but. Maybe, I don't know if it's.
Well.
I mean, income is a deciding factor, but.
Oh, it's income.
It's income. It's based on household income relative to the region that you're in. And there are specific limits that the state imposes on designated affordable housing, which this would be. There are very strict limits on the bedroom mix. You know, how many can be three bedrooms versus one bedroom? There's handicap accessibility requirements. There's all kinds of requirements for, for affordable housing. Otherwise, you can't call it designated affordable housing. So, but primarily what makes it affordable is the income limits, and it goes up to eighty. And it goes up to 80%, which is considered moderate income, and goes as low as 30%, which is considered very, very low income. And they are strict percentages about how, you can't do it all with 80%. You have to have very low, low, and moderate.
And those are of the county mean income? Those percentages?
I've noticed, though, that many of these recent developers have been paying you money in lieu of this.
Not recent, that was years ago.
Specifically, in this plan, not allow. Provide the units on...
Which we've been pretty good about for five-plus years, if not more than that. Like the new development at the foot of Harding Road and Hudson. Those two buildings on the front are affordable housing. Worst idea I've ever heard in my life. We very much...
Azalea Gardens.
Azalea Gardens, yes. Which we didn't approve, but we very much want the affordable units in, mixed in with all the units, with no fit and finish changes, no amenity differences, nothing. So that they're mixed in throughout, not separated out in the front yard.
They are in that.
They are in that job, yeah, which did not come to this board. And Station Place, the building behind it, yes, also not this board.
Right.
So although my mother was on the board, that board at that time.
Okay, thank you for your time. Two points. New Jersey Transit should have jitneys here, not these massive white buses. Number two, mayor, fix the roads.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on it.
One follow-up comment. Because a lot of people have, in consideration of this project, talked about traffic and, you know, the flow-through that comes in the state, the county roads and so forth. One of the problems we have in New Jersey is we do not have regional planning. Planning is done in, what do we have, 565 municipalities now? Lost track. We lost one a couple of years ago. So that every project that comes before the planning board, we have to address that project on its merits. We don't get to make the decision about how that integrates with Little Silver, Shrewsbury, Fairhaven, Titten Falls. I mean, it's one of the problems of planning in New Jersey. Susan Calati could certainly...
Should I just say that?
More than I can.
I guarantee you, people would be upset if you forced them to think about a different town that's not their town. All right, that's why it's a very, like, short-sighted, long-sighted. I go back, I'll say it again. I think we should reconsider going back to six to get those affordable housing units, if we can, or finding a creative way to ensure that not for aesthetics and cosmetic changes are we willing to give up affordable housing.
Anyone else in the public have a question or a comment? Say, sorry, Bill, there's other people. You can come up again when everybody's finished. The two people just raised their hands. Come on up, Alan.
Good evening. I'm Hill at 64 McLaren Street. Which you know, I know.
I didn't even write your name down on my list.
Really?
No.
Well, next time, I'll give you one. Anyway, it's really to congratulate the mayor and council and the planning board for delivering what I think will be the elephant in the future.
It's... It'll be a what?
A white elephant. And that might be a British term. I'm sorry.
No, I just didn't hear you.
Oh, right. It's built on a couple of myths. The first myth I want to raise is affordable housing. We all know affordable housing is not affordable, not the majority of people who really need low-cost housing. It's a failure of government at the federal and state level transferring this need onto people like us. Mr. Beeb has correctly said, you know, we're 500th of the local authorities in New Jersey. How can we deal with that? How can we? This is how we deal with it. We accept the number that we're given by, in this case, Denholtz and people like him. And thank God that by the end of this month, we can tick that box to the state that says, "We've met our targets." In the long run, it will make no real difference to people who really need that housing. The second myth here is that this is driven by New Jersey Transit. Well, it is driven by New Jersey Transit. And anybody who's studied this the last few years will know that New Jersey Transit has been driven by boarding numbers at stations. And the thought that, especially since COVID, you know, boarding numbers have not recovered significantly. In fact, New Jersey Transit has one of the worst recovery figures in the country. Nevertheless, New Jersey Transit believed that developments like this would provide customers, basically. But they found out over the last three years that other places where they've brought in similar developments, you know, at Princeton Junction, places like that, even here at Aberdeen, that does not deliver the improvement they need. And they are having to have a rethink. And they've been doing this rethink now for about the last year, 18 months, as we heard in the, I've forgotten the name of it now, the their new, the middle ranger concept that they're getting. They've learned that this doesn't work. And so what we've done, what you've done, what we've had to do is base all this, our development plans, on something that's not gonna happen, that will not work. And the other thing is, is this wasn't demanded by New Jersey Transit. In actual fact, this was demanded by Denholtz, who went to New Jersey Transit. There was a time, you know, when New Jersey Transit went out for partnerships with Transit Villages and transport-oriented developments, what they're called now, and local authorities like ours went in to be partners. This has happened in other places. But here, no, we end up with Denholtz. This council had an opportunity, actually, to be in at the beginning, but didn't take it. And I know, I know you can say, "Well, that wasn't us. That was this law." But, you know, it's cabinet responsibility. And, you know, you could have at some point said, "This is wrong. We need to go back and talk to New Jersey Transit again." So, you know, you're gonna get this, what most people in the town, and obviously, I mean, you realize this, obviously, I move in totally different circles to everybody up here who everybody loves it. Because I can assure you, there are a lot of people who do not. They don't have the facility to actually contest it or know what to say about it. And, you know, they're not here because they know, what I know, at the end of this meeting, this is just gonna be bunged through. And I think it's very sad. I think it's very sad of local democracy. And that's my point of view. Thank you.
Could you clarify? You said the myth of affordable housing.
I'm not gonna clarify anything.
Okay.
Because I would, there were several comments in this meeting. I would have liked to come back, and I don't, I don't, you know. So I think everything I've heard from you needs clarifying, too.
Sure. Then I'll ask Susan if you can answer it. Susan, what's the Azalea Gardens, which is probably, like, obviously not ideal apples-to-apples comparison, but I think I saw, I was reading something, and I think the income for, like, a one-bedroom or two-bedroom was, like, $40,000 or something like that, the qualifying.
I can pull that up.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Oh, you have it.
The UHAC income levels for a two-person house range from $32,310 for very low to $53,850 low and $86,000 moderate. For four persons, those ranges go from $40,000 to $107,000. And those are further allocated within the plans according to the Borough Ordinance to various size units and numbers of very low, low, and moderate. So when all is said and done, those 70 units will range from very low to accommodating people like teachers and nurses.
Yeah.
Great diversity of potential housing resources.
Absolutely. I definitely know people that make around that range in the lower end, and this would be a great opportunity for them to stay and contribute to our town. So there's nothing fictional to me about that.
Just to point out, I've addressed my comments through the chair. And I think it's only right that people on the podium here address their answers through the chair, rather than trying to act as the chair. At least three people here have taken over the chair's role. And I think, Mr. Manquio, so you ought to get a grip. Thank you.
Alan, why, I have yet to ever agree with anything you've ever said here. I completely, yeah, I completely disagree. The members of the board are welcome to speak at any time they like, and that's the way we run these meetings. Anyone else in the public have any comments or questions? Come on up, Bill. This is your last chance.
This is the last speaker?
No, we'll see.
Well, then, we've addressed traffic, talked about it at length, taxes. Now, you would think that with all those luxury units that have been brought into Red Bank since I have lived here the past 40 years, you would think that if we plopped up these $1 million, what'd you call it, apartments, that, you know, we'll just keep plopping out here, that it would somehow help the folks that have lived here for many, many years with respect to taxes. And I know that traffic and taxes are not really the wheelhouse of the board. But what is the impact of the growth that we've been putting in when all we can see is that when I first lived here, there were two black funeral homes, coffer and chalice? There were several black churches. One of them has been sold. The two funeral homes are gone. And one of the driving factors is that somehow we've adopted this thing where we want to be fair, fair to the developers and the billionaires that are getting attracted to Red Bank. So what we do is, we want to redistribute the taxes so that even the low-income people pay what you call their fair share of taxes. So the NAACP has been in the business of trying to help people kind of lower their taxes by challenging the assessment. But every time that you put these luxury units that you're planning to put out here, what does it do? It increases the worth of Red Bank so that matchboxes with obsolete, what'd you call it, bathroom facilities, no marble tops and whatever, that people purchased for $30,000, maybe 20, 30 years ago, and now assess that half a million. So you're paying taxes on something that's deemed to be half a million because Red Bank is hot. Now, that is what the NAACP, through my leadership, is trying to get Red Bank to come to court. Come to court and throw me out. Tell me that whatever it is that I'm saying about these things is hogwash.
Get back to this building or I'm gonna throw you out.
All right. So what I'm saying, that if you want to approve this, ask Red Bank to come to court so we can at least address some of the issues that we cannot address here and have them throw me out as talking nonsense. But don't run away and then push this thing through.
Thanks, Bill. Last call. Anybody else? Mary Ellen, come up and say something positive to end the night for us.
Mary Ellen Mess, 95 Hudson Avenue. I do want to thank you all for all of your consideration. I know it's been a lengthy process. I can't say that I'm satisfied with the outcome.
I didn't think you would be.
But sometimes you have to take your victories in small chunks. I know that members of the council are very anxious to get a Transit Village designation for the train station. And I think this redevelopment plan meets those requirements. I think it exceeds the requirements in terms of density and height. I am also an apologetic advocate for affordable housing, but I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what that is because part of that is the properties have to be deed restricted. So our history is such here in Red Bank that we were always a working-class town, and we had a lot of rentals that had affordable rents. Unfortunately, those properties don't necessarily help us meet our fair share housing obligation. And as we see all of this real estate speculation and properties being bought cheaply and rehabbed, and then, you know, the rents have been going up astronomically. So a property that may have, an apartment that may have been $1,800 a month five short years ago, now that landlord in that two-family home wants three, sometimes $4,000 because they look at something like the rail and they say, "Oh, those apartments are going for $4,000, $5,000. I can go to Home Depot, spruce things up a little bit and raise the rent." And that's really what's been happening here. So, you know, this idea of affordable housing, the homeless people who are wandering around town, they're not gonna qualify for affordable housing. Okay, they're not gonna have the documentation, the income, the assets, the history, the financial history to qualify. And then there will be a lot of young professionals. We've heard them talk here, and many of them think, "Okay, so, you know, we just increase the supply and rents will drop." Well, if a two-bedroom is going for $5,000, even if you have a 25% price drop on that, it's still not gonna be within reach of many people. So, and I think that my issue really is with New Jersey's housing policy, which, of course, you have no control over, that has kind of created this glut of luxury housing, which raises costs for everyone, as Mr. Poku said, with taxes, with rents of adjacent properties. And at the same time, completely ignores those middle income. When we say middle, missing middle, we're not just talking about the style of the place, but the fact that, you know, there are people who exceed the income limits for affordable units, but they don't really, can't afford the luxury units. So what's in the middle? And most of this stuff is really not suitable for families. Now, Mr., I believe it was Bon Tempo, had mentioned that, you know, it's great to build studios. It's great to build one-bedroom apartments, maybe even a two-bedroom apartment. But if you have a family, you need more space. Most of these buildings that are going up here in town don't have units that are gonna accommodate children with families. Nor, maybe you don't wanna raise your kid in a very dense building where they have to take the elevator up and down to get outside every day. And the city of Newark, years ago, did away with a lot of its high-rise housing simply because it was not good for families and you had big apartments, but the kids were running up and down all day on the elevators. And there was a lot of wear and... And there was a lot of wear and tear on the building. So there are a lot of things wrong with New Jersey's housing policy. And I really think it's brought us to the, this point where we're kind of stuck. Because we got to do what. New Jersey wants us to do with regard to meeting our fair share housing obligation and what New Jersey Transit wants to do. With their, um, property to generate revenue and hopefully ridership. Although I think they're, they're overly optimistic on that, in that regard. And also. Had a third thing. So was Jersey. Oh, and Denholtz, because Denholtz wants to make a substantial profit. So, um, I thank you for your time. Um, not surprised we're at this point. Not satisfied that we're at this point. But I think, you know, the problem is bigger than Red Bank. And we see all these big box buildings going up all over the state. And ultimately, it's really not going to solve the housing crisis because we have too much luxury housing. And not enough housing for working people with families. That's all I have.
And thirty thousand dollars is working class. I do worry about the middle, but I deeply worry about the bottom because people need a starting place. Um, and I agree, I want to live in a world where housing is not created for profit. So that's why I do what I do every day. Because housing is a human right and if this is one of the only times we get to really secure affordable housing for the very bottom. I encourage us to really consider not just the practicality. It is a headache to go back and reconsider all again. But these are few times that we will actually be able to look back and said, we took the hard choice of actually creating affordable housing. We got here because people keep avoiding that conversation. It's time for us to, uh, I think somebody mentioned, is it being driven because we want affordable housing? I would hope so. I would hope so. I would want more places in America to drive projects forward because of the affordable housing that this will bring to their town. Um, whenever they get the chance to, but, um, yeah. That's just, I go back to, to me, it's, it's not only, uh, not a great trade-off for aesthetics. I think in the situations that we're living in right now, it's honestly borderline immoral to shortcut or trade off affordable housing.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. I agree with almost everything you said. Really do. And, and, and you're not wrong about any of it. Really not. That was the last comment unless someone really, really has to say something. Because my cat's freaking out. Um. Does anyone else on the board have any other questions? So our job here tonight is to approve this redevelopment plan or not. Does someone want to make a motion?
Uh, I would make, uh, a motion to recommend to the Borough Council the adoption of the Red Bank train station redevelopment plan.
As we've discussed. Or I don't even know how long.
With amendments.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Mayor Portman.
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis.
Yes.
Dan Mancuso.
Yes.
Lou Demento.
Yes, I think this is, uh, in line with the master plan. I think it makes. Great sense from planning point of view. And I know that people would like single-family duplexes or small houses. But in this location, it makes sense to have. Um, density. And I would have been happy with six stories. But, um, it's fine now and I think it's going to look good. And I would really hope that this is a stressful project.
Barbara Boas.
Um, I agree with, um, a lot of the things that were said tonight and I, um, I disagree with a lot of things that were said tonight. Um, but I, I do think it's an important project. Um, this is not the final step. Um, we will see you here many, many more times, uh, in the, over the next two years probably, um, and I vote yes.
Wilson Bibi.
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez.
Oh.
Frederick Stone.
Uh, yes. Think of the, uh, affordable housing.
And Brian Farnigan.
Yes.
Sure, thank you.
I certainly hope it's not two years that we're doing this because I won't be here then. So, um. Thank you, everyone. Thank you from the pu- from the public. It really means a lot that you're here. Come back when the site plan. Comes, there will be far more detail in those plans than we currently have. There will be people from New Jersey Transit here who I will make speak. Um, and take questions because I have several for them. Um. With that, I'm happy to motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Time for the heat on.